Good evening, everyone. It's now 7:00 PM, May 16th, 2016. City of Owen Sound's council meeting. We did not meet in camera or closed session. We're starting right now. I note that councillor Thomas is unable to attend tonight. He has an ill family member and he's focusing where he should be. I guess we're... There isn't a declaration. I do this every time. We don't need a declaration to move into regular meeting. Additional items? Councillor Lemon?
Yes, Your Worship, I want to bring something up about the OSCBI.
Okay. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Wright?
I have one addition to the agenda. It's from Active Lifestyle Centre request.
Your Worship, I'm going to have Mr. Alan Parker brief us on Service Review 2016.
Service Review, Ms. Coulter?
Thank you, Worship. Just a quick announcement about the Harrison Park Pool Meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you. Counsel down there? No, and I'll give an update on my activities the last 10 days, 14 days. Good. Disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Anyone? Councillor McManaman?
Thank you, Worship. I declared a pecuniary interest on the matter in the corporate services minutes that are coming forward. Item 7B is a... As I am a... It discusses firefighting, and I am a firefighter. So when those minutes come forward, if there's any discussion around those points, I will leave the room.
Thank you. Others? Okay, I will have a pecuniary interest with regard to 11A3 on the schedule, on the agenda. That is somebody that I have represented in the past in my law office. Confirmation of minutes, number five.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Dodd, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 2nd, 2016, as printed, be adopted.
And all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number six, resolution moving.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Kepke, that city council now go in a committee of the whole to consider public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for which notice was previously given, and other business.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So now in committee of the whole. We have no public meetings, but we do have two deputations. First one, I welcome James Skonyak, Vice President, Corporate Affairs, Bruce Power, for the annual update. Welcome.
Great. Thank you very much for having me. And I do apologize to the mayor and the deputy mayor in advance, because you'll hear the same presentation you heard at Gray County Council a couple of weeks ago. So I'll try to add some new things in over the last two weeks. I do truly appreciate the opportunity to provide a bit of an update on what is going on. At Bruce Power, we recognize we are a very large employer, not only here in the city of Owen Sound, but throughout Gray County. And this has been a practice that we've undertaken for the last four or five years to make a point of reaching out to all of the municipal and city councils and county councils throughout the region to have a bit of an annual update and to provide the opportunity for members of council to ask any questions. I want to start with a little bit of sort of a wrap-up from 2015 and where we see ourselves today as an organization. Many of you read in the media, which was covered extensively, towards the end of 2015, we announced the completion of a very significant agreement with the province of Ontario that could see the Bruce Power facility operate as long as 2064. And that was a multi-year agreement that effectively will allow Bruce Power and our investors to continue with our multi-year investment program and ideally secure our facility over the long term. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Also towards the back end of 2015, we held a mission called an OZART mission. It stands for Operational Safety and Review Team Mission. And the reason why I flagged this is because there's an international organization called the International Atomic Energy Agency. It's really a subset of the United Nations. So anytime you hear about the United Nations playing a role in countries like Iran or looking at non-proliferation throughout the world, it's the International Atomic Energy Agency that does this. And their role is to obviously not only ensure nuclear safety throughout the world, but in developed countries like Canada who use nuclear power for commercial purposes, to come and challenge our framework here and make sure we're meeting the toughest international safety standards. And we had a group from the IAEA. In fact, I had the honor of being the co-executive lead for this mission related to the Bruce site, where they brought 14 experts from throughout the world, reviewed every component of our operation over a three-week period. We give them complete access to the facility. They can meet with any staff. They can see any report, ask any questions that they want. And in fact, just on Friday, the report from this international mission was released. We were quite honored with the results of the report. It was a very strong showing for not only Bruce Power, but the Canadian nuclear industry. And as is usually the case with these things, what they try to do is identify best practices that can be shared with companies throughout the world. And these have to be things that aren't being done in any other nuclear plant they've ever seen. And they identified actually 25 areas where at Bruce Power, where their practices they want to see shared with operators throughout the world. So obviously, one of our next steps is to open our doors for any other plants around the world who want to see how we do those things. Another component to one of these reviews is identifying areas for improvement. And there are five areas for improvement, or what we call recommendations, in the report. And recognizing, this is on the basis of gaps to excellence. So one of the things they're trying to do is also compare you with the best. So these are great learning experiences for companies like Bruce Power, for operators and nuclear plants, because it not only tells you the things you're doing well, but also talks about the areas where you can improve. And, you know, I think, you know, given the importance of safety in our operation, it's always important that we're not taking our performance for granted, that we're always sort of pushing to that next level. Ending 2015, and it's still the case today, as we enter the summer months, hopefully soon, Bruce Power last year produced just over 30% of Ontario's electricity. And we generated that electricity at 30% below the average residential cost of power in the province. Everywhere I go and I talk about energy, everybody always asks me about energy prices. And the odd person complains along those comments on the cost of energy. And one of the things that we like to remind people is that if you look at your electricity bill and you got 100% of your electricity from our facility at the rate we paid, your bill would be 30% less. So within the context of all of the supply sources in Ontario, we're a low-cost energy provider, and we hope through our multi-year investment program, we'll keep it that way. And one of the other major highlights at the end of 2015, and it's been a major focus for us at the start of this year in particular, has been what we call our HSA cobalt program. Over the last sort of five, six, seven years, one of the things we see in global healthcare is new techniques, new technologies to not only treat patients, but, you know, tackle forms of cancer and do various diagnostics. And one of the challenges that we have in the international healthcare sector is that as technology is advancing, all of these new technologies to fight cancers or to sterilize medical equipment, they all need what we call medical isotopes. And the largest global supply of medical isotopes is coming from reactors such as the NRU just near Ottawa that came into service about 50 years ago. And a lot of these facilities are reaching their end of life. So one of the big concerns the global healthcare community has, especially in the high-tech area, is that they're developing all of these technologies to treat things like cancer and provide radiation treatments, but they're running out of medical isotopes. So one of the things that we advanced last year, we already produced the world's largest supply of Cobalt-60, which if you've ever gone to a hospital and you've used, you know, any kind of, you know, catheter, syringe, anything in terms of operations, all of that equipment has been what we call sterilized using Cobalt-60. And we're the world's largest supplier of that. But given the fact that we have an operational plan on our site to run to 2064, we're trying to think, what else can we use this technology for? So one of the programs we're advancing, it's a high-specific activity cobalt we hope to produce on-site, and it's going to be used to treat brain cancer throughout the world. There's a new kind of technology that instead of very invasive operations for tumors and things like that, that people have to be treated with, instead of invasive surgery, they're using high-tech radiation technology. It's all actually called a cut-knife technology, where they can shrink and eliminate tumors remotely. The problem is they need this HSA cobalt. So we're hoping in the years to come, that's going to actually start coming from our facility. Just going to jump ahead in a few things, because I know people receive the slides in advance. So I talk about our investment program in terms of what it takes to operate our site to 2064. If you look at our facility, really simply put, we have eight reactors, units 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We're very good at being complicated with numbering things. And right now, all eight of those reactors are fully operational. As you may know, a number of years ago, we refurbished units 1 and 2. And those units are essentially good to operate till the mid-2040s. But over the next 15 years, units 3 to 8 will all start to reach their end of life. And really what determines the end of life of a nuclear reactor is your kind of core reactor components. And that's what's shown here in this picture. And in simple terms, I like to call it the plumbing of the reactor. They're the main components that were put in when the reactor was constructed. Every year, when we go in and do outage campaigns, we inspect the integrity of those reactor internals. But after a period of time, they will eventually need to be replaced. So when we talk about extending the life of our reactors, we're talking about a campaign to go in and effectively replace all of that plumbing. And that's what this deal allowed us to do. And so if we're able to deliver the deal as we had contemplated with the province, that program will start in 2020 and run until 2035. And once complete, the entire facility will run till, as I mentioned, the early 2060s. This is the schedule, as I mentioned, starting in 2020, going right out to 2030, 2035. And as you can see, what we've tried to do with the schedule is to stagger it, because while we're doing this, it's very important that we're also maintaining our role in the province supplying electricity. It would be a real challenge if we were to remove all of our reactors from service at once to carry all this work out in parallel. Actually, it wouldn't be possible, as we could leave the electricity system short of much-needed supply. Of course, one of the things that's really important that goes along with this, and one of the things I should say, when we talk about investing in our assets, that's all private money. There's not one penny of government money in that. It's all met by our investors. It's all private dollars. Even though the Bruce site remains publicly owned, we invest all of the dollars from private sources into the assets. And of course, through this multi-year investment program, it's really good for the economy, not only in the region, but throughout Ontario. If you look at the 4,200 base staff we have on-site, combined with the, what we call the economic spin-off effect, and the additional jobs that will be created through this investment program, we're really talking about 18,000 jobs, both direct and indirect, that are really secured through this transaction. So, you know, one of the things that I think it's important to flag for a city like Owen Sound, even though it is a 45, 50-minute drive from the site, you know, we are seeing more and more employees living further and further away from the facility. And one of the reasons for that is because a lot of the people who are working on our site are skilled building trades folks, who are either millwrights or carpenters or laborers. And those tend to be individuals who go and do work wherever it is available, wherever their union hiring hall calls them. The good news on our site is we have such a steady stream of work that what used to be peaking work is now going to be very permanent. So there's a lot of building trades that are able to stay in the area and commute to the Bruce site. There's a lot of building trades, especially down near Sarnia, that were traveling out west to the oil sands to do work. Obviously, the oil sands have slowed down, so that does provide us an opportunity to keep those folks close to home. So very significant economic impact on the area. And of course, we do that while we're also keeping electricity rates low. I do want to jump ahead to, a look ahead to a number of items for the balance of the year. Later this year, we will be rolling out some more detail related to the refurbishment plan. And we've already had some conversations, both with the counties and various municipalities, and look forward to the same with the city around economic development. There's a lot of interest in our investment program. And of course, all communities do have an economic development mandate. They all want to grow their economies. They all want to support the businesses in their area. What's important for Bruce Power is that we try to take a regional approach to this. Even though we may be very aware of, you know, the difference between the city of Owen Sound and the municipality next door, or the difference between Bruce and Gray and Huron, for the kind of people that are doing work in this region on our site, they very much view this as a region. And so part of what we want to do in the coming months is try to rationalize as it relates to Bruce Power, how do we better integrate those things? So if we have a supplier who's looking to move to the region, we're able to best facilitate connecting them with a municipality that may meet their needs on the basis that, you know, any new business to the region is good for the entire region. The provincial government will also be reviewing the Long-Term Energy Plan this year. It's a plan that's reviewed every three years. While we don't expect our role in that plan to change, given that we just signed a very significant contract with the province, we think it's going to be very important for our region in particular to participate in that process, to get our message out. I think for any of you who are involved in government decision-making at the provincial or federal level, you know, one of the lessons learned from our facility is that when you're not being vocal, decisions can get made. And once decisions are made, it's tough to reverse them. And so our ongoing dialogue in the Long-Term Energy Plan is to show there's a lot of support for what we're doing, and we're getting our message out. And you may have seen in your mailbox, it's something we worked with all three counties on in the area, community safety guides. We have a requirement to communicate emergency preparedness information in the extremely unlikely event of a nuclear emergency in the area. And one of the things when we were advancing this initiative that became clear to us was, for decades and decades, we used to put this in the back of people's phone books. You know, you used to be able to go to the pages in the back of your phone book and have all this information. The problem is, is most people don't use phone books anymore. I still do, but most people don't. You know, they go online, they get other information. And the problem with that is phone books used to be a source for a lot of good emergency information, whether it's poison control, what to do in a fire, what to do in a hurricane. So our thinking was, we had an obligation to provide emergency information as it related to nuclear. So we agreed with the three counties, Gray, Bruce, and Huron, too. Since we were spending the money to print this thing and mail it to everybody, why don't we put all that information that is typically in the phone book in there? So we sent about 50,000 of those out to the area around the site, and it has everything in there, from what to do in a fire to calling 911. And our hope is, is that every year, we'll update that. And so people can put it on a shelf somewhere, and that's in place of the phone book, and it's nice and thin. And then finally, to wrap up the update, one of the things that is really important is always testing our emergency preparedness capability. You know, we can invest millions and millions of dollars into equipment and sophisticated models, but when it comes to emergency preparedness, as you folks know at the municipal level, who have a huge responsibility for this, one of the biggest things with emergency preparedness is communications, people talking to each other. And so the reason why we run these drills isn't because we think there is a significant imminent danger. We run the drills so people get used to working with one another. You know, it was just a really great experience, and I do want to congratulate the city and the county of Gray. We received an urgent call, although it was never needed at the end of the day, from Natural Resources Canada around the Fort McMurray fires. And there was an urgent call for firefighters. And within 24 hours, between Bruce Power, the county of Gray, including the city of Owen Sound, Bruce County, and Huron County, we had 60 people that we could send over in a moment's notice. We had Porter Airlines agree to donate a plane. We could send 50 to 60 people over to support the needs in Alberta. It turns out, the challenge in Alberta was that actually they had too much support and didn't, weren't able to take advantage of it. It may still be required. But that's just a good, a small recent example of, when people are used to working together, when these things come up, you know who to call, you know who to contact, you're not introducing yourselves to each other. So, I mean, Mr. Mayor, that's my update. I'd be happy to provide any answers to questions.
Thank you. Questions? Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, James. And I enjoyed that just as much as I did the first time.
I'm glad.
And I'm going to ask you the very same question, because I think that this community might be interested in your answer.
Sure.
But a few years ago, there was some talk and a bit of controversy about bringing cylinders through the city to our pier to be shipped over to Sweden, I believe.
Yes.
What is happening to those cylinders? And if they're sitting over there, why can we not get the technology that they use over in Sweden here to refurbish them?
Sure. It's an excellent question. So maybe I'll just provide a bit of background. I know you, you're very aware of the issue, but me, I'll just provide a bit of context. So whenever we refurbish a reactor, there are components that have to be removed and replaced. And one of the components that is in a nuclear reactor is what I call a large kettle. They're referred to as a steam generator. And these are what we call intermediate-level radioactive waste. They're not highly radioactive. But the issue is, is they're very large. You know, you can picture, essentially in a reactor, what you're doing is you're using a nuclear reaction to create heat. That heat is boiling steam in this kettle system, and that steam's driving a turbine. So you have these large steam generators, and they're treated as intermediate-level waste. And a number of years ago, when we refurbished units 1 and 2, we removed the steam generators from units 1 and 2. And because they are such a low-level kind of radioactive waste, it seemed crazy to us to store these things that are, there's 32 of them, the size of school buses, in a building. When there is technology throughout the world, used both in the US and in Europe, where essentially what they do is they melt these down to the point where the small component of that that is radioactive, you remove that out. So you just store the small component that's radioactive, and the remainder you release into shielding and whatnot. The problem is, the whole issue became somewhat political, not somewhat political, it became political. And I think that because there was a bit of misinformation as to what it was that would be shipped, people thought, I don't know if I want highly radioactive material being shipped, you know, anywhere. And so it became a real emotional issue. And then, you know, outside of the region, I think there was actually a lot of support for it in the region. Outside of the region, it became, you can't put these things on the Great Lakes to ship them. So the whole issue got blown out of proportion. And so I think what we're thinking now is, is that, exactly to your point, you know, what can we do now moving forward to look at volume-reducing it? Maybe not by sending these to Sweden. What other opportunities are there available? Recognizing, again, these are very, very low-level products, right? I mean, there would be, these kind of products, you would see the same level of radioactivity shipped back and forth to cancer care treatment centers providing people treatments. I mean, so just to give you a sense. So going forward, obviously, we'll be replacing the steam generators and all the remaining reactors. So we're looking at what's available. I think the challenge, there's a lot of people that have advocated, why don't we build one of these recycling facilities here? The reason why these recycling facilities in Europe and the US are cost-effective is because in the US, they got 100 and something plants feeding these recycling facilities. In Canada, we only have, you know, a certain number of reactors. So we're just not large enough to justify the investment to build a facility to do this. But I do think there is some technology we can do. We're working closely with OPG to look at, can we reduce them, cut them, store them better? So we're looking at a bunch of different opportunities. But when you're dealing with nuclear, you can get a lot of misinformation quickly, and it takes us a long time to correct something. You know, I just gave you a long answer to a very simple question. Most, you know, we don't have the opportunity to usually tell that story.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask about the telephone town halls, and the answer to that is yes. We will continue with those now. Duncan's retired, because you asked about that as well.
Yeah, I did.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Councillor Kepke?
Thank you very much for your presentation. My question is around wind turbines. Do you have a wind turbine farm over at Bruce Power?
We built the first commercial wind farm in Ontario. It was a very popular thing at the time. And, I mean, there's thousands of turbines down our way. Our facility is about four or five turbines. It was a small wind farm we initially built.
So that's all you have now?
That's all. Yeah.
Okay. Can you tell me why sometimes they aren't going around?
Well, because the wind doesn't blow all the time.
Okay.
So, and I'm not being...
But some are and some aren't.
Yeah, well, it really depends on the, it really depends on the location of the turbine, its ability to move in relation to the wind direction, right? So, you know, you're pretty much limited by one of two extremes. The wind's not blowing, or the wind is blowing too much, and safety mechanisms kicking, and they don't. With our wind farms, we tend to see a capacity factor of, capacity factor, we mean the number of times it's operating full capacity, in the low 20s to high 20% range. So only about 25%, it's actually generating electricity. And that's the economic challenge for wind, right? You know, there's a lot of similarities between wind and nuclear. You have to spend a lot of money to build wind farms, a lot of capital to build and construct all those facilities. Obviously, same with nuclear refurbishing, spend a lot of money on building these plants and getting them up and running. Challenge with wind, you know, our facilities are running 90, 95% of the time. So the economics are better, because you're, with wind, you're spreading that economics over a 25% capacity.
Thank you.
But it is funny. I get the question all the time, how come I'm driving down and this one's going and that one isn't? And that's just the capacity factor they get, which is a very tough thing for the system to manage, because when can you count on the wind? But wind is a very small percentage of Ontario's supply mix. I think last year, it produced about 5% to 6% of our supply. So it's still a very small amount, whereas nuclear produced about 60.
Good. Not seeing any other questions. Thank you very much for coming. Oh, sorry, councillor Lemon.
I'm just curious how Bruce compares to the other nuclear plants in Ontario. I heard we were much more efficient here.
I like that question. Well, I guess what I would say is, compared to the other facilities in Ontario, I think they all perform very strongly. I think you would see Bruce and some of our things like forest loss rate among the top. But if you look at the performance of, for example, Darlington, which is operated by OPG, it's a very strong nuclear facility. If you compare, I think the way I'd answer your question, Peter, is, if you compare Canada's nuclear, Ontario's nuclear reactors compared internationally, they stack up very well, whether it's Darlington, Pickering, or Bruce, very good, very good operational performance across the board. You know, there's always a bit of healthy competition between the two operators. But Ontario's nuclear industry is very well-respected. Just as I mentioned earlier, the International Atomic Energy Agency, they did a review of Bruce Power in December. They're doing a review of Pickering this year for the exact same reason. So we like the competition. We like to say we're a bit better. But we all have a lot to be proud of. And, you know, Darlington, for example, for many years was setting very strong records. So it's a good picture.
Good.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you for coming, and we'll see you next year. Maybe we'll see you a couple of times before next year, but hopefully, for sure, next year.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Our next deputation is from Justin Tekel, from our Planning Division. Talked to us about Doors Open 2016. I think this is his first presentation to council. Welcome.
This is my first presentation. Thank you. So, good evening, mayor and council. So this year is Owen Sound's 14th Doors Open Event. The first was held in 2002, and they've been held annually every year thereafter. Doors Open events are hosted by municipalities across the province from April through October, and every year in partnership with the Ontario Heritage Trust. The purpose of the event is to showcase sites of historic, cultural, architectural, and environmental interest to the public free of charge. The dates for Owen Sound's event this year are Saturday, June 4, and Sunday, June 5, with most of the sites open from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on both days. Each year, the Ontario Heritage Trust tends to provide a theme for all of the various events to try and achieve sites that fit within that theme. And usually, the theme is commemorating a particular anniversary. And so this year's anniversary, or this year's theme, rather, is Medical Science and Innovation, to coincide with the 50th anniversary of universal health insurance in Ontario. And with that theme in mind, we've tried to pursue sites for this year that fit the theme, as well as including returning favorites. So in total, this year, we have 19 sites. And as you can see, they're all listed on the screen and on the map as well. New sites for this year... for this year include, uh, Grey Bruce Health Services, which is the hospital, Grey Bruce Health Unit, Moikwadong Native Cultural Resource Center, the Midwives of Grey Bruce, and the Best You and On Sound Surgical Center. So our progress so far, sites have been selected and confirmed. The Ontario Heritage Trust website has been updated with our events, uh, list, and, and our event is listed in the Doors Open Ontario brochure, which is distributed across the province and beyond. The City of On Sound's Doors Open website has been updated. Uh, Paulette and I will be on Rogers TV promoting the event on May twenty-fifth. A wraparound cover or spadia, including a list of sites, the map, sponsors, and a list of city events that are occurring around the same time, will be published in the Sun Times on Tuesday, May thirty-first. The week before the event, we'll be posting on the city's Facebook and Twitter pages about the event. Uh, and so far, the city's sponsors for the event include the Agromark Group, Berry's Construction, and Georgian Shores Marina. Reference sheets and other material to be distributed during the event at the sites are nearing completion. And so we still need volunteers. Uh, we need volunteers particularly from Moreland Place and Greenwood Cemetery. And the main requirements for volunteers is that you're enthused, and that you're able to participate for at least a minimum of a few hours. Uh, you don't need to be a heritage expert. The main duty is as a volunteer to be greeting guests, taking attendance, just, um, distributing print materials, and answering questions that visitors have. And interested volunteers can contact Pat Bryant at the extension on the screen. Uh, and if anyone needs any additional site reference sheets, or there's any other issues during the event, uh, they can contact the Tourism Center. And more information can be found at the two website links on the screen, which are the city's, uh, website and the Ontario Heritage Trust website. So thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions, and I hope to see you all at the event.
Questions? So on the city's website, uh, do we have a button right in the face page to get to it? Do we know?
So the homepage, or?
The homepage, yeah, that's...
Yeah, not yet, but yeah.
So, so it will be, and then otherwise, uh, www.doorsoopenontario.on.ca/events/onsound will get you there, too.
That's the, uh, the trust website for our particular event. And then the city's, uh, website is the link above.
So if someone wants to volunteer, they should be able to, uh, find a way through the onsound.ca page?
That's correct, so...
Or by phoning Pat Bryant?
Correct.
Okay. Counselor McManaman, are you not volunteering this year?
I've just been told by Counselor Dodd that I am volunteering this year again. So yes, I think we, uh, I think we both are volunteering again, and it's a, it's a great event, uh, to get out to a, a number of sites that perhaps, I mean, we're all familiar with, but you actually haven't been inside of. And, uh, there, there, it's great to see some of the, uh, the different, the lists there. Uh, some of those buildings have a long history and a very interesting spot. We were at Moreland Place last year, and that's a very interesting, uh, building and host there as well. So, um, encourage everyone to come out on June fourth and fifth.
Good, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Lemon?
Yeah, it's ironic that you are on the medical theme this year, because I believe Highland Manor at one time was actually a maternity hospital for the city. So you're actually getting an extra hospital in there for no extra charge.
Good. Thank you very much. Well done. So we can go down next to number nine on our agenda, which is Public Question Period. Seeing no one. Correspondence received, which, uh, direction of council is required, and I'm seeing no correspondence on that. So we're down to eleven A. Number one, report from Deputy Clerk with regard to On Sound DIA Board of Management.
Your worship, this, um, report is asking council to, um, make a recommendation to, or staff are asking council to make a recommendation. Sorry, staff are asking council to pass a bylaw to appoint Jacqueline Fertner to the OS DIA Board of Management as a voting man, member for a term effective immediately and ending January thirty-one, twenty nineteen. Um, she is a business owner, as council will recall from a prior report in the downtown improvement area, and is interested in sitting on the board. Uh, the board has also endorsed her appointment. Um, there is a bylaw on the agenda this evening as well, if council is of the view that she should be appointed to the board.
Thank you, Counselor Lemon.
I would move the recommendation making the appointment.
Comments? I call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number two is a report from the purchasing agent with regard to a backhoe loader.
Uh, yes, your worship, uh, in accordance with, uh, city policies and procedures, tenders were called for a backhoe. Uh, three bids were received. Um, the lowest compliant bid was received from Nortrax Canada, Inc. for a John Deere unit, uh, in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine forty-four. Um, the, uh, John Deere bid, uh, suits the city quite well. Uh, it will, uh, based on our experience, have the lowest overall operating expense over the course of the, uh, life of the equipment, and, um, and, uh, is serviced locally, so it'll, servicing costs will be, uh, correspondingly kept to a minimum. Uh, the other, uh, benefit to the city is that the, uh, equipment is consistent with other pieces of equipment within the fleet, so therefore we're only having to keep one set of spares and so forth. Um, so the staff recommendation is that the, uh, that the bid be awarded to the lowest compliant bidder, Nortrax Canada, Inc. in the amount of one forty-seven, nine forty-four.
Good, thank you. Questions? Comments? Counselor Gregg?
Well, I'd move the recommendation. I've got, uh, just one question, uh, actually one comment before the question, that people I've spoke with, they're quite surprised to learn the city did not already own a backhoe. Um, just in seeing it around the city so often, had assumed we already had one, so, um, they found it interesting that we actually had not had one for several years. Uh, but this is, uh, in, during budget, being moved over from, um, reserves. Uh, and I guess, is it already paid for in the, within the water department, uh, to build up that reserve? Um, and going forward, then how's that work?
The funds are drawn out of the, uh, the reserve account for equipment, your worship. Um, and then as the piece of equipment is utilized, uh, funds are drawn from the activity accounts, and, and a deposit is put back into the reserve, and that will fund the replacement of the, of the piece of equipment.
So what you're saying is depending which department it's, uh, being used by, then funding will come from that back into the reserve?
Absolutely, your worship. And so water and wastewater, if it's a wastewater job, they will be contributing to the, uh, to the replacement of that piece of equipment, just the same as the regular public works would be.
Okay, other questions? Um, Counselor Lemon?
I maybe should know the answers to this, but what is an extendable dipper stick attachment? I haven't got a clue.
Um, it's a, uh, it's a very technical term. Um, if you imagine my shoulder being the point at which the, the boom is attached to the tractor, the first part is known as the boom, the second part is known as the dipper stick, and the bucket is on the end. And it's extendable in that there's a, a hydraulic ram that will extend it out to about twice the length of, of, uh, what it would be normal.
Thank you. I have one question. What did we set the budget at? Are we close to the budget amount? Does anyone, if, if you know, great. If you don't?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but we're in, uh, we're in the right neck of the woods, your worship.
I, I should've, should've let you know I was gonna ask that, but I didn't, so fair enough. Uh, I'm gonna call the question all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Number three, I'm gonna ask Deputy Mayor to step in.
Do we, you're at, uh... I don't know what we're at here. Excuse me. This book is a little confusing. We are at eleven, uh, three, and it's site plan approval. Margaret Potter was here, she's gone. So, uh, Ms. Coulter, are you going to take us through this?
Thank you, yes. This is an application by Quantum Properties for site plan approval for two properties on the south side of Sixteenth Street East. The property was recently subject to a consent application where an L-shaped parcel of land was added from the more westerly property, fifteen twenty-five, to the more easterly property. Um, you may have noticed, um, the proposal includes the demolition of two existing structures. Um, formerly a vet clinic, recently Coldwell Bankers, ha, has been demolished. On the more westerly lot, there'll be a building that includes a one-story, twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot office, or sorry, retail use, with a two-story office building. Um, on the more easterly lot, there'll be a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot office. There'll be a new sidewalk along this, that portion of Sixteenth Street East, and also, um, where there's been two entrances to those two properties, they'll be combined with one entrance and blanket easements over the property. Um, so the application, uh, was submitted with a number of, um, studies and information. Within the city's official plan, the property's designated East City Commercial, and it permits a range of commercial and retail office uses, and the proposal conforms to the official plan with the conditions that are recommended. The zoning bylaw puts the property in a C-two or a retail-commercial zone, and subject to the requirement for a landscape plan, which will address certain buffering requirements, um, the, uh, the proposal, uh, does meet the requirements of the city's zoning bylaw. The parking area and drive aisles, um, sufficient parking is provided on both the properties, as well as, uh, an appropriate number of barrier-free parking spaces. Um, there is, uh, a portion of the signage that's in the site triangle, and there's a condition that addresses that. Um, these buildings share a common entrance. Um, there'll be sidewalks directly in front of the building, and there'll also be a con, a pedestrian connection between the two of them that will be marked to alert traffic that's coming in and out of the site, that people may be moving from one building, um, to the other. The plans have been reviewed by the Accessibility Advisory Committee, and the recommendations from the committee have been included, um, in the comments this evening. In terms of public works and engineering, the, um, the stormwater management plan for the property is, oh, is, uh, has, is satisfactory. In terms of grading and drainage, there needs to be a slight revision as they were taking water from an abutting property, so, um, that's not considered to be a best, best practice. There are a number of conditions, uh, from the chief building official, and you'll see that the, um, the building, uh, the Ontario Building Code, more and more with respect to accessibility, is venturing into, um, the area just immediately outside the bill, the building. Uh, site plan agreements are recommended for both developments with security in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. So, um, in consideration of the report from the community planner, uh, staff are recommending the site plan, or that council approve the site plan, subject to the five conditions that are listed in Appendix A.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pam, is the, the screen or the fence that you're talking about at the back, a one-point-five-meter screen, is that consistent with all the other properties along there? That doesn't seem very high. What are we trying to block out there?
There is a, a new draft plan residential subdivision that would be located to the south, so the idea is that one-point-five-meter either fence or landscape buffer would provide a buffer between those properties. Um, in this case, the parking is located primarily in the front, um, so it's the building in the back. Um, it, it is what's required as a minimum in our zoning bylaw.
Okay, thanks, and I'll move that recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Newman?
Yes, I was going to move the recommendation, but I also was wondering about the screening with the residential area to the rear. It does, that's the minimum standard?
Through you, yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, it's been moved by Counselor O'Leary. All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. That's a good news story. Okay, would someone, please, bring the mayor back in? There he is.
Thank you. So we're down to eleven A four, which is report from Director of Community Services with regard to brownfield financial incentive.
Thank you, your worship. Um, this application is the sixth application since two thousand and ten under the city's Community Improvement Plan, and, um, in support of development, the, um, the program has supported development to the tune of about one-point-nine-seven million dollars for vacant land in brownfields. So the application is under the brownfield financial tax incentive by Turbot Marine Limited for eight fifty Alpha Street West, and this contains the Potawatomi Garden twelve-unit residential development. So council had granted site plan approval in November of twenty fourteen, or sorry, in, in January of twenty fifteen. So the necessary form was received together with the Phase One and Two, um, environmental, as well as with the acknowledgement from the M.O.E. The eligible amount under the program is thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. So the redevelopment of this building on, um, is supported by the provincial policy statement, the city's official plan, and also the, um, the Community Improvement Plan. Um, so an agreement will be required, and, um, that will come forward to council, uh, once the, um, the property has been reassessed. So, your worship, we're recommending approval of the application under the C.I.P. for Turbot Marine Limited, and request that financial services staff bring forward that agreement.
Counselor McManaman?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I, I just wanted to highlight, this, this program has been a huge success in getting some of these properties that otherwise perhaps would not have been developed, getting them developed. A question for Ms. Coulter, so, but I believe this one might be a little bit unique in the sense that they're getting a brownfield, um, grant, even though their property isn't a ground, a brownfield. Um, and I think I understand this, so, so maybe you can walk me through this. Because they were a commercial building, wanted to become a residential building, they had to provide certain studies, uh, engineering studies on, on this, the state of the property, if, if that's the proper term, to the tune of thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's why they're allowed to apply under this grant, because they had to do it as part of the study to become a residential property. Hope I stated that right.
Through you, your worship. The Environmental Protection Act, which is a provincial, uh, piece of legislation, requires where there's a change of use from certain uses to other uses that are considered to be more sensitive, it triggers a requirement for a record of site condition. In this case, the, um, the Phase One and Phase Two didn't require, um, there to be any, uh, remedial action taken, but however, the developer still had to go through the required tests and studies to demonstrate that to the Ministry of Environment. So, um, the cost of doing that work, provincial requirement would be, um, what you see is eligible for the grant.
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
To prove it.
That was my question. Did, I, I got it answered. Thank you.
Good, thanks. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. Down to number five. Um, Director of Community Services with regard to DIA maintenance agreement?
Thank you, your worship. For a number of years, there has been a, a maintenance agreement between the city and the D.I.I. that outline the responsibility of each party, and the agreement really has provided a clear working relationship and has served, uh, both parties well. Um, in the agreement this year, the changes are highlighted, and, um, one includes a change, um, of staffing from March one to November thirtieth each year. Depending on snow, it would give them some flexibility in terms of scheduling staff. The, they've started their, um, date in the spring a little earlier, thinking spring, they've moved it from March sixteenth a little earlier to March first. Um, the agreement reflects our new committee structure, and the hottest street sale, um, has been updated from the hottest yard sale. The twenty-five-hundred dollars that the city had previously contributed to Busker Fest is in the, um, agreement, in the schedule of costs, and the DIA has just asked each year to confirm how these, uh, funds would be spent. And, uh, in the last couple of years, they've been spent to market and promote the first Friday events in the downtown. So the recommendation is that council, um, approve a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Comments, motions? Counselor Dodd, moving that one?
Thank you, your worship. Um, through you, too, with the Director of Community Services. Sorry, I will move it in a second.
Okay.
So just for clarity's sake, uh, so when we have another thaw issue, um, like we did this past year, so say we get a thaw in the middle of February, and we have that dog- past year, so say we get a thaw in the middle of February, and we have that dog dirt back out there again, at that time, that'd be the city's responsibility to clean that up prior to the March first date.
Right.
Great, so I'd move the recommendation.
Thanks, well done. All in favor? That is carried, thanks. Number six, Facilities Booking Coordinator. I think this is Ribfest.
Thank you, your worship. Earlier this year, we'd heard that after five years, that there would be, that Ribfest wouldn't happen, and then recently, there was an announcement that Ricky Brooks of Bradford West Willimbury Events, sorry, Community Events Association, would be putting on Ribfest in Own Sound. So Mr. Brooks has requested the use of the north parking lot of the Bay Shore Community Center on Friday, September twenty-third, and Saturday and Sunday to September twenty-fifth. The event will feature Ribfest teams, music, food vendors, as well as a midway. Mr. Brooks is aware of the requirements of the city on matters such as security, licensing, waste disposal, recycling insurance, Hockern Pedlar licenses, damage deposits, et cetera. Staff is recommending that we charge the same fee for the Bay Shore parking lot as what we would charge at Kelso Beach. So, your worship, the recommendation is that you would, in considering the report, approve in principle the event, and ask staff to negotiate the details of an agreement and bring that back to council for approval.
Okay, comments? Mary, or Counselor Capke?
Not a comment, but through you, your worship, I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Gregg?
It's just one quick question, but, and you can just confirm this for me, Director. I think this is the week after the Fall Fair, is that correct? Okay, yeah, thanks.
So this is good, and I think that'll be a better location, a little easier on the soil, and perhaps easier to control. So, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Number seven, verbal oral report from Deputy Mayor Wright with regard to the Gray County Council.
Thank you, your worship. I do have, the county, of course, is launching their five-year review, and there is going to be a public meeting held this Thursday night. It's the first time I've ever known the county to hold a night meeting, but there is a night county council meeting, and this is to review the official plan. It will be in the guise of a work meeting, where people will be asked to sit at various tables and go through things. The councillors and the staff have held one of these a few weeks ago, that was very interesting, and what we're looking for is twenty years in the future, we're looking for some suggestions, ideas, et cetera. So if anyone is free Thursday night at seven o'clock, they're more than welcome to come. This morning, we held an emergency management exercise, and that was very interesting, and I have brought a lot of information with me that I hope to share with our emergency officer, and I will make an appointment to see him at the fire hall, share that.
Thank you. Questions from anyone? Go ahead.
Just make a comment. Recently, it was announced that Roma had separated from Ogra in terms of sharing the conference after fifteen, sixteen years, and I thought that's quite disappointing, because that original motion was one that started at the county of Gray to combine those two conferences sixteen years ago, and it has saved the taxpayer of Ontario tens of millions of dollars over those years, and it was just disappointing to see that those two have separated. It's very easy to go to all kinds of conferences, but I think that was one where you could go and somewhat spend the taxpayers' money wisely, and get out of it some relevant information. So to now have two conferences that are, again, two weeks apart, is, I think, a sad misuse of dollars, but perhaps there's a new motion that could come forward from the county.
Pick one or the other, I guess, now, instead of both. Good, thank you. Eleven B is consent agenda items.
Your worship, there are two reports from the Facilities Booking Coordinator, the first on the Emancipation Festival. That envisions the use of Harrison Park on Saturday, July thirtieth. The second one is the Concert Factory, Inc., a second concert the weekend of Saturday, June twenty-fifth, at Kelso Beach Park. There are planning notices where no report was required, minutes of boards and committees, along with financial statements and annual reports for receipt. The Own Sound and North Gray Union Public Library Board Meeting held March thirty-one, their financial statements for the year ended two thousand and fifteen. The Festival of Northern Lights Board of Directors Meeting held on March eighth, and the Own Sound Police Service Board Meeting held on March twenty-third, along with their annual report for the year ended two thousand and fifteen. And lastly, the Drinking Water Source Protection Committee Meeting Minutes for a meeting held on January twenty-ninth. There is also correspondence received, which is presented for the information of council, including an array of resolutions from other municipalities, and also, there was that correspondence that was directed to yourself, your worship, from Ernie Hardiman, on the Municipal Elections Modernization Act, and council will recall that staff provided a report last July on that item, and the bill, Bill one-eighty-one, which is the amendments to the Municipal Elections Act, generally reflects the recommendations that were forwarded at council's request to the ministry.
Good, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to receive items eleven B one to eleven B eleven, and for approval of eleven B one and eleven B two. Counselor McManaman?
Question, your worship. If I might, to the Director of Community Services about the concert, the additional concert on June twenty-fifth. So there's one already on the twenty-fourth now, is this the same, it's the same promoter, is it the same acts, entertainment, is the second night, is I guess what I'm asking?
Through you, your worship, my understanding is the second night will be a different act, but it is the same promoter, the same individual will be doing the alcohol service, so we'll be back to you with revisions to the agreement to reflect the use of the park for the second day.
And I'll move the motion for receipt and approval.
Okay, I'm gonna vote in that first, and then we can go back through some of the things if we can.
I...
Go ahead.
Your worship, I have some questions about the Emancipation Festival, which is some things included in that, and I'd like to find out the answer to that before I move...
Okay, yeah, fair, go ahead.
Yes, first of all, this year, there is a security deposit being required for the Emancipation Festival. I don't think that was on the books before. Why is it there now? Is there a problem? I mean, it's been going on for a hundred and fifty years.
Through you, your worship, I'm not aware that there's been any issues. It is standard where we have a large event using our facilities that we have a damage deposit. If council wishes, you can waive the requirement for the damage deposit.
Do we know what we did in past years? Did we get the deposit?
Through you, your worship, if you would just give me a couple minutes, I could look back at the...
Just think, if it's the same as every other year, then it might make a difference.
I'd have to look back.
If you, if, yeah, go ahead, have a look. In the interim, Counselor Capke, do, I think it's still you that's doing the Festival of Northern Lights?
No, I'm not.
It's Counselor Gregg. If you want to give us, do you want to give us a run-through in those minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Body. Yeah, the festival met, I believe, is March eighth. The minutes pertain to, went over a couple items, the first being they're continuing to work aggressively on a new board structure to streamline their committee meeting, but also become more efficient, and you see some of that, I think, come into fruition. They've got a marketing committee, they've got a volunteer recruitment committee, they've got their annual general meeting coming up in June, so the volunteer committee is working diligently, trying to harvest some new volunteers to take part in the festival moving forward. They had a, Jim Adams was at the meeting that night, and Jim is quite involved with a large display called The Greatest Story Ever Told, and it's situated down at Harrison Park. It's located west of the birds, so you're facing the Harrison Park Inn, and you could pull in, pull your car in, and basically take in the display. So it was quite interesting to get some history and background on what, a display that represents the true meaning of Christmas. It was originally financed by local churches in the community, and Jim somewhat maintains ownership, because there is a religious tone to it, and he feels it best that it's not within the displays of the festival, in case there was ever a problem with religious content from it. But a wonderful display, needed some work again in the last couple of years, but a terrific reason for people to go down to Harrison Park and follow the lights. They've also had discussion that night, and there's more details have come forward since, but a Trillium grant request in partnership with the D.I.A., and we've learned about four weeks ago that Trillium has received a reduction of about twenty-five million dollars, off the top of my head, I think, for capital grants, and there is some concern that their request proposal might be affected with that cutback. Went over Tribuneite, which is coming up on June fourth, quickly coming up, and also is looking at various methods or layers of creating some sponsorship levels for the signs and the displays moving forward, so.
Good, thank you. Report from Own Sound Police Services Board, Brian, do you want to?
Sure, thank you, worship. Okay, these are statistics from February, these are the March minutes, statistics from Platoon one to four, hundred and forty-seven Highway Traffic Act charges, nineteen complaints reports, seventy recorded cautions, fifteen Liquor License Act charges, seventy-five under the criminal code, and there's a hundred and twenty-four hours put in in downtown foot patrol. There were a total of nineteen, sorry, eighteen on-duty ride checks in February, using thirty-eight officers, thirteen and a quarter hours, two-hundred-and-sixty-four drivers checked. There were six Highway Traffic Act charges, zero rides roadside tests, and zero impaired driving charges. Collisions in Own Sound, there were twenty on the east side, twelve on the west side, ten on parking lots, three failed to remain collisions. The chief's report, chief advised members that the two thousand and sixteen budget is tracking on target. The chief thanked and congratulated the mayor for his leading up in preparation and participation in this year's Polar Dip, where they raised over eight thousand dollars. And I wanted to make council aware that we have changed the format now with the police service board, we're starting our meetings at nine in the morning, and there'll always be a public meeting at nine a.m. to begin with, and then we'll move in-camera to finish the meeting, and we have changed the criteria in terms of, you know, what we're going in-camera for. And I did want to announce that this is Police Week, and, just a minute here, if you give me a second. Wednesday, May eighth, they have Chief for a Day swearing in at ten a.m. at the Own Sound Police Services Second Floor Meeting Room, and Thursday, May nineteenth, is the Chief Citation Awards Ceremony at eleven a.m. at the Own Sound Police Services Second Floor Meeting Room. What else to have? The two thousand and fifteen annual report is also in front of you. I think Mayor Body is working on maybe getting together with the police service on a Monday that we have off, so that we could maybe discuss some of the things in the annual report. That's all I have.
Carolyn, have we gone ahead and sent out a notice of that, have we? It's still on Wayne's desk, I can't remember. The thought is that we should have a meeting with the combined board. It was decided in a protocol, apparently years ago, that we'd meet at least annually. So I'm trying to set that up on an off Monday to put that together, and it seemed like a perfect time to be able to get the annual report presented by the chief. Hasn't gotten to you yet?
No, I haven't heard about that. There was that ad hoc committee, the joint, but that was dealt with at the meeting when you were in China.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Ritchie?
If I could, your worship, our executive assistant is working on the details.
Oh, okay. Good, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Body. I have a quick question. Is it also the week that one can get a tour of the police building from seven-thirty to nine for the right reasons? I'm not sure if I saw that, was that this week?
I'm not sure.
Being Police Week? Okay. But a second question, too. In the past, Gary Levine had been a provincial member on the board, but in the annual report, he's not there, and he hadn't been at the last meetings. I was wondering, is there something...
His term has expired, and we're waiting for the province to reappoint.
Okay, so I didn't know what the procedure was there in terms of how that's reappointed, so, thanks.
They have received applications, and we're waiting. I'm gonna go back to Ms. Coulter.
Thank you, worship. Council dealt with the Emancipation Festival in agreement last year on April twenty-seventh. It was report CS fifteen oh fifty-six. The schedule of conditions did include the damage deposit, and it looks in the minutes like council approved that recommendation without any amendment, so I think last year there was a damage deposit.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah. There was just one thing I had on the post, is a embarrassing spelling mistake on the part-time and scheduling of officers and number of hours. I wonder if I can move that to be corrected.
No, that's not up to us to correct, that's corrected over there, but sometimes that work can be very difficult.
I didn't know there was...
While you've got your microphone on, I think, and talking anyway, do you want to tell us about the Own Sound Housing Company Limited?
Yes, things are progressing there. The springtime is the time of maintenance on the properties, and that is underway. We are working on some new housing, and we're hoping that this Friday, there will be a meeting to discuss exactly where we're going to go with that, because we have determined that there is a great need for accessible housing in Own Sound, one- and two-bedroom type, and we think we might have a solution which we are working on.
Good. Any questions? Okay, I think we hit all the things before we voted, instead of the other way around, that's okay. So Counsel McManaman had made the motion to receive eleven B one to eleven B eleven, and to approve eleven B one and eleven B two. All in favor? That is carried, thank you. We're down to eleven C, which is minutes of boards and committees for approval, minutes from Accessibility Advisory Committee. Who's presenting those? Counselor Gregg?
Thank you, Mayor Body. I can present those. The only item which was before the Accessibility Committee was the item which we dealt with tonight, the fifteen twenty-five, fifteen thirty-five approval on Sixteenth Street, and the one comment that came out of the committee was that staff work to have perhaps a western edge of the property, a sidewalk, that would join the sidewalk alongside, parallel to Sixteenth Street, to the sidewalk in front of the building. So that was the one concern that Accessibility had, was being able to move foot traffic from the sidewalk to the actual development. So that was the single item before the committee, and with that, I'd ask for approval of those minutes.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Number two is minutes of Corporate Services Committee from May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Counsel Capke?
Thank you, worship. On this particular meeting of the Corporate Services Committee, their Parking and Bylaw Enforcement Division presented the draft Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw and Access Agreement.
Enforcement Division presented the draft Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw and Access Agreement. So the following recommendation is contained in that, in those minutes, and I'll just read the recommendation. That in consideration of the staff report respecting draft Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw and Access Agreement, the Corporate Services Committee recommends to City Council to pass the Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw as set out in the report, with the additions to include the rail trail from the city limits to Third Avenue West, crossing 27th and 28th Streets West, to direct staff to submit a set fine application to the Ministry of the Attorney General for the offenses as set out in the report, and to pass a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the access agreement with the South Bruce Peninsula ATV Club and the Ontario Federation of Altering Vehicles Club in a form satisfactory to the city solicitor. The other item that was dealt with at that meeting is the first quarter, year-to-date budget-to-actual report was received, and as well, the item on, a report was received on Emergency Services Steering Committee and their 2015-16 budget.
And on budget to actual, we in good shape?
Yes, I think we are, your worship.
That's probably the big question.
You sound surprised.
Ms. Allen, do you want to give us a, just touch on that?
Sure, I can go through the report. Basically, it highlighted a few variances in different departments, some sort of corporately and others that were specific to departments. There are still some vacant positions that haven't been filled, and some staff that are still away on, on long-term leaves, maternity leaves, et cetera. So that's creating an underspending in wages. In addition to that, council will recall that there was $195,000 sort of set aside at budget time, not towards anything specific, and that will offset the underspending in wages somewhat. Just thinking in my head what else we talked about. I also included with that report an appendix which was just showing the status of capital projects to date, and as we start to get invoices trickling in, some of that information is there, although really the most of that, the crux of that report is just in the status of the projects, what's been started, if any's been deferred or canceled. At the bottom, my overall assessment is that we are in a surplus position at this point, and it is expected so far to persist to year end.
So we're where we should be at this time of the year?
Yes.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, your worship. My question will be through you to the Director of Corporate Services. Regarding the capital funding that you just spoke of, just again, that the police capital budget was $120,000, we're coming in at 158 already?
Yep, the, the police budget is showing is over budget at the end of March, and typically what they have done in the past is when they do have overspending in capital, they use their revenues for police record checks, which are unbudgeted, and they apply those against any overspent amounts in capital. That's what's happened in the past, so my expectation would be that they would do a similar thing this year, if there's still that overspending at year end.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kepke did move that, correct? Yeah?
What?
Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry.
Didn't, didn't, I thought you were done, go ahead.
Is it possible that we pull 7A-1, that's the ATVs, and vote on that separately?
So my motion will be to move the minutes, save and accept item 7B-1 to be voted on separately.
Okay, so I'm going to call the vote on that. Oh, wait a minute, you're not done.
Did you say A or B? The ATVs is A1.
I thought you asked for B.
A1?
A1. One, I'm sorry.
Okay, clear now?
We're voting on A1, my motion.
No, we're voting on everything but.
Oh, okay.
So the, the rest of the report, so all in favor, the rest of the report, that is carried, thank you. So we'll have a look at 7A-1. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I really don't have much more to say about it, I've been pretty vocal about, about this one over the past couple of meetings. Once again, reiterate that I'm not opposed to the ATVs in the city, I'm just opposed to this current recommendation. So with that, that's all I can say.
So, okay, go ahead.
I'm going to move a motion that the recommendations contained in the minutes regarding item 7A-1 be approved.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Mayor Body, two points, I wonder if I can get some clarification on, there's some mention to the number of ATVs driving on the road streets as groups, as well as organized rides, which the city requires 60 days' notice before it happens. Is that part of the overall recommendation then, as it is, or, and what constitutes a group? If it is?
At.
Go ahead.
At the meeting, the question was asked of the ATV club, how many do you feel would be in a group that may drive? And their answer was maybe two to four people. The, the larger group I think you're talking about is the event that's taking place, and perhaps Mr. Smith can elaborate on that.
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, the agreement contained in that report does anticipate any large-scale rides, the South Bruce Peninsula ATV Club coming to council first for approval. So they did the same thing with their, or with the AGM that they're holding in June of this year, that city council approves separately from, from this route. So that allows for some control over, over large-scale events that are happening.
So we're contemplating it to be like a parade almost, that we'd want to know if there's a big group, and where they're going, and what the route is, and all those things.
Yes, your worship, and just through you, in, in the case of, of this event being held in June, they are splitting up riders, so there isn't a large impact on the roads.
Okay. Counselor Greg, you finished?
Yeah, thanks. So if five individuals from Chesley, for example, came in on, on more of a tourism means, on ATVs, there's, they're aside from that, they wouldn't have to give notice or, okay. I have a concern with, and then a question subsequently, with these ATVs crossing 28th and 27th Street West to Third Avenue West, which is the Eddie Sargent Parkway. If the county has held up for this period of time yet in approving the ATVs being able to use county votes, why are, why are the ATVs allowed to come to the Eddie Sargent Parkway? That being a Gray County vote. Because my, my only problem with this is, I don't think it's fair that, that all the ATVs essentially get routed back onto Fourth Avenue West, which is the way it currently reads, it just, it's a problem of fairness to me, and I don't think that's right. We haven't been able to come to a consensus with the county yet, but now there's this line here that calls out Third Avenue West specifically, and even if so, I do wonder about having ATVs have a left-hand turn in the middle of the block where there's no signage, no intersection, no anything to go back onto the trail as a vehicle sitting in the middle of the road, and I'm just not sure that's a good thing either.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Becking, I think.
Your worship, through you, there is no provision in any act or statute that prevents an ATV from crossing a roadway regardless of jurisdiction. So to that end, driving, allowing the ATVs to go to the Eddie Sargent Parkway, provided they're, they're going transverse to the direction of the, of the roadway, there is no law that prohibits us, prohibits, prohibits them from doing so. And it's our understanding that they wish to frequent businesses in that area, so that's the reason why that was permitted. With respect to the county, the county, as your council is aware, is, is considering whether to allow those vehicles on county roads, obviously the Eddie Sargent Parkway being one, and, and pending that approval, we're just simply preparing ourselves to, to facilitate that.
So we have a Transportation Committee meeting this Thursday, I haven't had time to look at the agenda yet at the county, so I don't know if it's there yet, or, I don't think we've covered it, Transportation yet, so we're still waiting for a report. Counselor McManaman, I think you had your hand up?
I just wanted to, and Counselor Greg touched on it, that this bylaw is presented, still doesn't allow driving on county roads, and is unlikely to be in place in time for 2016 by the county. So it, while this is a test case, it won't be a full test case, because all those county roads in the city will not be eligible, anyway, but I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay, other comments? Okay, Counselor Dodd?
Sorry, thank you, your worship. Would we be able to make this a recorded vote?
Yep. You make the request, you did, you are?
I am. I did.
Making the request, okay. Go ahead, De.
Just to be clear, we're voting to keep it the same as in the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, Counselor Lemon?
One question, a lot of the ATV activity obviously takes place in rural areas, and they've been in some of the townships for quite a while. Is there any particular reason why the county is not?
Just, we haven't got there yet, is my understanding, if you're right, may have a better explanation.
Yeah, it has to go through the Planning Committee first, and because it's involving the, not only the roads in the city of One Sound, but the tracks from the country into the outskirts of the city, and they have to hold public meetings on it. So public meetings will be held throughout the summer, and then it goes to, back to planning, then Transportation will take a kick at it. By the time it gets to council, it'll be September or October before it gets to the full county council, therefore, it will not happen this year.
Counsel, Counsel Kepke?
And I think in fairness, I don't believe that the South Bruce Peninsula Club came to Gray County to request the roads until just recently.
It's been on the, it's been discussed, I, I recall it being discussed already, so there's, as the other municipalities have gone through it, there were suggestions that we just beg, borrow, and steal whatever bylaws they have, it's been going around. I know there's been lots of discussions, so it's, it's in the works somewhere even before they got there. Okay, so recorded vote, am I calling the question? Go ahead.
Can I just highlight again, this is only a trial basis, so it ends in October, and we will assess whether it was good or bad, or what was good, what was bad, so just so people know that this is just a trial.
Yep, thank you. Carolyn, am I calling the question, and then you're going through it thereafter?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, so I'm calling the question first, all in favor? And opposed? So two opposed, the rest in favor.
Counselor Dodd?
Opposed.
Counselor Greg?
Opposed.
Counselor Kepke?
In favor.
Counselor Lemon?
In favor.
Counselor McManaman?
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary?
In favor.
Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Ray?
In favor.
Mayor Body?
In favor.
So that's one, two, six in favor, two opposed, and one counselor absent from the meeting.
So that carries, thank you. We are done, which I think we are with Corporate Services, Minutes of Operations Committee?
Thank you very much, your worship. The, at our Operations Committee meeting, we had a public meeting held to prepare to commence work on 16th Street West, Ninth Street A West, and Eighth Street West. There was a presentation made by the project manager, Alan Brownridge, and he told us about the scope of the work, and that information is all, is all on the internet. There was, a couple of the neighbors were out, but there was, there were no serious problems or anything presented to us. We received a letter over concerns of specialized transit, Mayor Body has offered to meet with the people that sent the letter in and to discuss this, and we also felt that this letter should go to Service Review for some of the suggestions that were made in the letter. On the airport report, we received the first quarter report showing the net revenue of fuel sales was $22,879. There's, they're requesting repairs of the runway for some cracks that are in the runway, there is, money has been put aside for that, and I'm not sure if that work is going to commence shortly or not. If anyone has a question, they can ask Mr. Becking about that. Under engineering, we've, there is a recommendation that we are making to council that Fourth Avenue West, street parking remains status, Fourth, Street West, I believe it is, street parking remains status quo, that is, parking allowed on both sides of the street, and that this be monitored during the winter months. Regarding parking at the Bay Shore, there's a consideration given because of congestion and unsafe conditions down there during events that have huge crowds of people. There is a report that we disallow parking on, in some areas, naming 17th Street between Second and Third Avenue, and some parking on Second Avenue East, and also on Fourth Avenue East. And we're just, we're not recommending any of that parking now, all we're asking is that there be a, we allow a public meeting to be held on June 23rd, and that the neighbors, the attack, and other high users of the, of the Bay Shore for large events be invited to attend. Under Public Works, we had a report on the Genoa landfill site, we also had a report on winter maintenance cost savings. Material costs were down $182,225, labor costs were down $23,667, equipment costs were down $2,700, for a total winter savings of $208,600, give or take a few dollars. And some of that was from using differently material on the roads, and we hadn't had any unusual amount of complaints over the use of material, and that will be monitored. Under Transit, we had wastewater report on our wastewater treatment plant, the status of that plant, and also the dashboard. We also had an update on Ryerson Park, and you'll know that the work is commencing on Ryerson Park now, and people have been asked not to use it. I do have a letter that I do want to read some parts to you, because it's a, it's the Ontario's Drinking Water Quality Management Standard, and some of you may not have seen this, it came in the form of an email, but it is a congratulations on a successful audit, and it comes from the Listing Committee, this is the official listing, and it says, "Congratulations on a successful audit, it is my pleasure to confirm your company's management systems registration as shown on the enclosed electronic certificate, if you would like car copies, et cetera. The certificate accomplishment positions you among the best in your industry for fulfilling the requirements," which is, is indeed good news for us, and at the bottom, it just says again, "Congratulations on your regulation, and thank you for choosing us as your registrar." But that's for our water treatment crew out there, so indeed, they are doing an exceptional job, and we have got one of the best water plants in the, in the area, around. This says, "One of the best in the province," so that's quite a feather in our hat.
Good.
That's my report, and I'll move receipt of those minutes.
Okay, approval. Any questions? Counsel Greg?
I just would point out the, the work in front of Hillcrest School along Eighth Street West, and if we approve also the work along Ninth Street A West, and I know in the budget this year, there was also approval of work at the intersection of Tenth Street and Eighth Avenue West. It kind of lent itself, or gave a little credence to another year of consultation from the school board concerning accessibility and traffic flow even around West Hill would have been. Those two just kind of bring that to, to light as good reasoning to have had more time, but just wanted to make that note.
Thank you. Counsel O'Leary?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a note that for people at home, if they attend attack hockey games and don't normally park on the parking lot, you would park on the surrounding streets that you should pay attention to, the public meetings coming up Thursday?
23rd of June. June 23rd. Thursday the 23rd. May 23rd.
No, it's May 23rd, I believe.
May 23rd, your worship.
May 23rd. Sorry about that, May 23rd.
Thank you.
May 23rd. Thursday, May 23rd at 5:30 at City Hall. There are significant changes, changes in the proposal, thank you. changes in the proposal. Thank you.
I don't have the 23rd being a Thursday. Your worship, I stand corrected. It is the 26th.
The 26th.
There we go. Okay, good. Because 23rd is Victoria Day, and I'm not coming. So, Thursday, 26th. Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We have no minutes of closed meetings for approval. Other business? Counselor Lemon?
Thank you, your worship. Two things. I was at Osom last week, and one of the things that was interesting was that many municipalities in Ontario are having problems with accommodation review. We're not the only ones. I don't know if that makes me feel better or not. But I have heard that Sarnia has appealed to the ombudsman over the actions taken by the Board of Education. And I think that might be where we should go. They're supposed to look after mistakes and adjustment and things like that. And so, I would make this motion. The staff has to be, contact the municipality of Sarnia to see what action they have taken with going to the provincial ombudsman, and if such action has been taken, then a report be brought back to the next meeting of this council. And I think that would be, I'm not sure who that'd be under. I assume that would be probably under Pam.
Counselor Lemon, somebody, a private citizen, has already gone to the ombudsman and got a report back from them.
I wasn't aware of that. What did the ombudsman say?
Not a darn thing. That there was nothing wrong with their procedure. So, we wrote to the Minister of Education and got a response back that they didn't see anything wrong, and they weren't interfering. Someone went to the ombudsman already, made a report, got the same answer back that they do not see nothing wrong with what they're doing. It's been done.
Well, I wonder what he's doing then.
Counselor Kepke?
Just a question. How, what would the process be then to investigate the number of trustees you have when you have so many schools in your area?
I wouldn't know. It's under the Education Act, and, you know, part of that legal opinion was, we're under the municipal act, they're under the Education Act.
Okay.
Counselor Lemon?
Yeah, the thing that's very frustrating is, as a municipality, decisions we make are reviewed, can be reviewed by the Ontario Municipal Board and reversed. And yet, education, which is a key element to the future of this province, appears to have no, it doesn't make any sense. And I really think we've got to maintain the fight on saving our educational system. Like, a few years ago, they replaced a school, which I guess now probably will end up being closed. It's mass confusion, and I really feel we, as people representing the people of Owen Sound, need some answers, and we haven't gotten them.
There is an appeal process. It sounds like it goes back to the Board of Education. If they wanted to go through an administrative appeal to a court, they can do that thereafter. There is, the OMB is a very specific reason to have an appeal, to keep it out of appeal courts, keep it out of administrative courts. I suspect, and I haven't done the research, but there is a process that if you wanted to do an administrative appeal, that there is a process in court, which is different than the OMB. But we certainly answer to the OMB for planning decisions, and we answer to the ombudsman for any other thing that we do or don't do as far as the way we run our meetings, et cetera. They do too. That's been expanded within the last year. The ombudsman looked at it, frustrating as it is. So, you've made a motion.
I was acting on information that there's been no response from the ombudsman so far.
There's a letter.
To us, from the ombudsman?
No, from, yeah.
The ombudsman's letter didn't come to us, I don't think. Did it?
No.
It would go to the person that sent it?
I saw a copy of it at some point.
Oh, you've seen a copy of it? Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure who sent it to me, but I did see a copy.
Was that person from this area or from another area?
No, we'll tell you after. But somebody you know.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion in that case if, if something has been gone to him and he hasn't done anything. I'll try and find some method in getting the attention.
Okay, thanks. Deputy Mayor Wright?
Yes, thank you. We have received on our desk from the Active Lifestyle Centre requesting the use of Shoreroom Number One to hold a tournament, and they expect 68 people, and they're charging $6 or something, which nets them $408. And this is money that they're raising to, to run their operation. Now, this is part of our seniors' centre. Do we not normally, and I'm going to ask through you, your worship, to Ms. Coulter, do we not normally let the seniors use the Bay Shore at no charge? I know they have Bridge there and other things.
Through you, your worship, through the agreement with the, with the seniors that was extended. I believe they have rentals on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Don't hold me to that. I should have brought the agreement this evening. However, it wouldn't include this day, which is a, which is a Sunday. So, council's direction would be required on this request.
Okay. Well, I'll put a motion on the floor then. It's, I mean, they, the reason they're in the Tannery Building, and we do have an agreement with them to use that, but sometimes they have bigger crowds and need an expanded spot, which we can't provide for them other than the Bay Shore. So, to me, it just makes sense that they can move from there over to the Bay Shore. So, I guess I'll put a motion on the floor that we, we allow them to use Shoreroom One for this event at no charge.
Okay. Counselor, no, haven't demoted you yet. Go ahead, Ms. Coulter.
Sorry, your worship. I'm just wondering if that could be subject to the, the room being available, that's all. Just, I just don't know off the top of my head, and maybe they've already checked, but just, we want to make sure that there's a room available that day.
Oh, I'm sure we do. Okay. It just, Shoreroom One, now that's the, they normally play Bridge in that room, do they not? And there's, and so, the agreement says they can play Bridge at no charge in that room on certain days.
So, you're amending your motion to?
As the room is available.
Room, if a room is available. Counselor McManaman?
Thank you, your worship. I'll be voting against the motion. As council knows, we provide the McQuaid Tannery for free to the seniors' group at a cost of about $12,000 a year. We provide free rentals, as Ms. Coulter has just indicated. Last check, that was worth about $10,000 a year. I don't see any reason why this group, if they need an additional day, they don't pay for it like every other group does. I'll be voting against the motion.
Okay, other discussion? Counselor O'Leary?
I can't support the motion. I think if we give in to this one, the nonprofit organizations will all be lined up, ask them for the same.
Counselor Lemon, had his hand up?
Well, your worship, when the Bay Shore was being set up, for instance, a lot of the kitchen equipment was brought in through a seniors' organization. They assisted with fundraising for the building originally, and when it was renovated. My, the, Bay Shore is a community centre, community, which includes seniors. And I don't think this is outrageous thing. I doubt very much whether, on Sunday, you don't see that many meetings at the, at the Bay Shore. I don't think this is going to cause a feast of new applicants for use of that facility. This is a seniors' organization with limited resources. Let's give them a hand.
Anyone else? Counselor Greg?
Do we know how, thank you, Mayor Wright. Do we know how, how long it's, it would be available to them for? There's, just not many details came forward in this whatsoever. Like, is the Bay Shore already staffed that day, or is this come at a cost to us then to have additional staff in? But it's, it's quite vague in terms of the event.
Sorry, Mary.
Thank you, your worship. The event should last maybe three hours. Might go into three and a half hours. The people who put on the tournament are happy to set it up and happy to tear it down, so the Bay Shore staff really isn't required. Everything will be cleaned up. The reason they want the room is because they can't accommodate the number of people that they get a demand for to go to these tournaments. They, the Active Lifestyle Centre will handle probably 11 tables, which would be 44 people, and they have more than that come to these. So, for that short time of day, I don't know what the normal rental fee would be, but, I mean, really, it's for seniors and something for them to do. I just can't see charging exorbitant fees to them.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, your worship. Maybe through you to the Director of Community Services, could you advise what the actual room rental would be for the day?
Your worship, if they use a large room, it would be $238. The small room would be $119 on the weekend.
Thank you. Number one is the small room, then?
The room they're looking for is the one with the windows at the very front, from what I understand.
So, your worship, Shoreroom One is the one on the left as you're standing outside, so that would be the $238 room.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, as moving to the motion, I just want to say that I totally understand Counselor McManaman, and I've always agreed with him, everything that we do. I think that, that he's right, that once we open the door to, to one group for nothing, then we have to open it to other. But this, this group is different, because this group had the use of the Bay Shore, and for many, many years, had their, everything at the Bay Shore. And every time there was something else at the Bay Shore, we kicked them out. And so, they had no place to go, so that eventually, we worked through the, the McQuaid Tannery, and it worked out all right. It just, it seems to me that the Bay Shore Community Centre is the place where, where seniors should be meeting, except the needs, and we should be supplying that, like they do in other communities, but the needs of the Bay Shore are so great for other things that we don't have room for the seniors there. So, that's, I guess that's the reason that I'm supporting this, this, this time, anyway. So, I ask for support for this motion.
Call the question.
Okay, we're going to call the question. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? One, two, three. So, it carries. Mr. Alan Parker, I think, is next. Service Review update?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Pleased to say that Service Review is going well. We've put out a multi-platform approach, including social media, the website, as well as the suggestion boxes around the town, posters, radio. It's been all over the place in the public forum, which was held on May the 9th. We had some attendees out at that, which was very good. To date, I can say that we've had over 700 participants in the Service Review, over 100 cards, and 600 entries online. Of that, there's been 275 additional comments were written in via email or submitted on personal notes, suggestions on how the city can enhance their services. So, we're putting this all together into a report. We'll be analyzing everything and then presenting it to council. We will be presenting it to council on June the 10th, so if anyone in the public listening or watching tonight wants to submit before the 10th, I'd recommend by May the 31st. That will bring it to council in time for June the 10th. You'll also be meeting on August the 10th or the 11th, and so if you don't make it in time for that meeting, we'll review everything again by the, by the August date. But I do recommend by, by the end of May. It would be fantastic. Just allow us to get everything together.
Good questions. Counselor McManaman?
I anticipated my question, your worship.
Yeah, you, you start to telegraph when you're going to ask.
We've been, anyway, yes, to Mr. Alan Parker. So, so what's the total number? Did you say 700 and some odd?
Over 700 right now, participants, so.
So, and my question is how, so somebody, suggestion number 250 on something, how, and maybe my question's to Mr. Ritchie, how will we, how will we respond to, are we going, are we going to have a, I know it's, when we had the employee awards, each item had a, their comment, and then an action item, either not recommended, or here's why it's not recommended, or in fact, recommended. Is that how you'd see us going through these, or how?
Through you, your worship. No, I hadn't seen you, seen us going through it that way, but if council wishes, we can certainly do that. The June 10th meeting will be a half a day meeting, so we're going to ask Mr. Parker to summarize the questions into percentages, so you'll know exactly who answered what percentage. And we will give that to you, and we will try to give you as much detail as we can on where the answers came from, residents, non-residents, all of that information. On the write-ins, I think we will go through, your worship, and try to come up with a theme. I can tell you, there are themes there. I've seen them already. I think we will try to give you a theme of what those write-ins are, and, and we will try not to miss any. Certainly, I would say there are, as, as always in, when you look for write-in comments, there are comments there that I don't think, that I would pass on to council independently, but we will try to give them themes, and it was not the intent to give you. How many write-ins, Peter, sorry?
Over 275.
If council wished, we could perhaps do some redacting of the 275, and certainly provide them all to you. We, we absolutely want you to get a feel for what the community thinks. So, if council wants those write-ins redacted and given to you, we, we could certainly do that.
I don't know. I personally think the raw data would be interesting. You can either
read it or not.
Right, exactly. And once the information's removed by who sent it, yeah, I think that would be worth having, so.
Somehow put it into a bulk that we can get online and read it somewhere, somehow, I think, for those who want to.
We've already compiled it into a certain file, so it's easy enough just to share it all, for sure.
Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, your worship. What has the staff participation been in this process so far?
Certainly, staff have been encouraged, as everyone else has, to, to, again, fill out the information, send it in, put their name on it. I'm very interested in, in the staff, so I can personally get back to them in the due course of time, I might add. So, they have been encouraged, as everyone else. Staff are, are vital inputters. As you know, I am out meeting with staff regularly. It's part of my job. I encourage them to ask questions there. I can tell you, as I've gone out to the various areas, we've had some questions. I hope I've answered them as, as honestly, as fairly as I can. But again, at the end of the day, I'm giving them opinions. It will be council that gives them, are we going to go ahead with some of these initiatives or not. So, staff have been encouraged to be participating in this, as has everyone. I'd love to see 22,000 responses.
I would hope also that as departments have their staff meetings, that the department head would be encouraging recommendations to come forward from staff as well.
Certainly, your worship. I, I don't have to speak for the department head. I know they do that, and this is a snapshot in time for this picture. We are encouraging all our staff to, to, again, stay in contact with us so that we can manage this business every week, every day. The Service Review 2016 will be over at some point, but we are always encouraging staff forever now to communicate with us. So, absolutely, they, if they haven't got that encouragement, I don't know what more we could do to do it, but we will keep trying.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you, Peter. Ms. Coulter?
Thank you, your worship. Just a reminder that this Wednesday, May the 18th, beginning at 6:30 here in council chambers, through Community Services Committee, we will be hosting a public information session on the Harrison Park pool. So, similar to Service Review, we've had an online survey. We have over 300 So, similar to service review, we've had an online survey. We have over three hundred responses now. So, certainly lots of comments and responses on the pool survey, so please fill out the survey online. It is right on the main page of the city's website and please attend the public open house Wednesday, this Wednesday, May eighteenth, six thirty PM.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, I think I'm next on the list. Just to cover off some of the things I've done, I was counting seventeen events or meetings in thirty-four hours put in in the last two weeks on top of council meetings and everything else. We already talked about Gray County started the, the review of their official plan. Chamber of Commerce Annual's Mayor's Breakfast was last Wednesday morning. It was a new format. Instead of asking the mayors the same questions about how they get along, I tried to come up with an idea, a, a fresh format that we walked in with a, a new, bold idea that was supposed to have no limits, no dollar values, no, nothing to hold us back and, and I think, I think maybe it was with mixed reviews and look forward to doing it again next year and seeing if we can perfect it a little bit. I think it should be noted, all four mayors hit transportation issues, which was kind of unique. None of us knew what we're doing or what each other were doing. Maybe none of us knew what we're doing. The other thing that was, I thought, really telling is that all four mayors came in with an idea that benefited the region, not just themselves. It was very regional in, in thinking and I hope everyone that was there noticed that. Last Thursday, I attended an Irish gala dinner at Georgian College. It forced students, two instructors and two administrators or instructors from the Dublin Institute of Technology. Gray, Georgian College chef, teacher Anthony Bevan is a graduate of Dublin Institute. He stayed in touch. Our students went there a year ago. Their students came back this year. A student who graduates from the diploma program here can transfer to there and get a degree in culinary. There are masters given out at DIT. They're working eventually and giving out PhDs. Culinary over there is everything from food sciences to nutrition to food, chef, entrepreneurship, restaurant management and, and different things. So, they've got these different things that our students from Georgian College will be, be able to go to Dublin eventually and, and become more educated and hopefully come back and share their knowledge in the region. Last Friday night is Owen Sound Sports Hall of Fame Dinner. It's been thirty-five years since the first one. Eleven new names were added. Peter Rainsford, Jack Aiken, Curtis Sanford, Jeff McDougall, Don MacLeod, Jim McCray, Marilyn McComb, Brian Seaman, John Garvey. John Garvey is ninety-two. And had to quit umpiring two years ago. Amazing, refereeing and umpiring forever. Nineteen seventy-seven Kings Farms fastball team that won a provincial championship and really started the, the fastball history that continued with Counselor O'Leary in his era and, and long after he was playing. Also, a special word is given at the end, which was a surprise to Ted Briggs, who everyone knows from the Owen Sound Sun Times, being the sports writer and the editor for years and has continued to be involved in the Sports Hall of Fame and tracking and has this great history of, of all the sports in Owen Sound. So, eleven very worthy people will be going up on the wall. Mr. Skonyak was talking about emergency preparedness. The city held their annual emergency exercise down at the fire hall last week. Senior managers and staff did a tabletop exercise to practice for emergency events. So, when things like the fire of August twenty fifteen rolls around, then we know what to expect and what to think and how to, how to proceed when, when those emergencies hit. So, that's my stuff. Like next, just a motion that the committee rise.
That the committee rise and report.
Number thirteen, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number fourteen?
Moved by myself, second by Deputy Mayor Wright. For the action taken in committee of the whole and considering public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for which notice was previously given and other business be confirmed by this council.
All in favor? That is carried. Notices of motion, seeing none. New business by resolution? We have none. Bylaws? Jeff, you want to give us a run through?
Yes, your worship. There are nine bylaws on tonight's agenda. One to confirm the business of tonight's meeting. One to reinstate the City Hall Accommodations Ad Hoc Committee. One to make an appointment to the Owen Sound Downtown Improvement Area Board of Management. There are five bylaws to execute agreements already authorized by City Council. Four, one, a facility use agreement with Keystone Children and Youth Family Services for the Family Fun Festival. An agreement with G Techna Inc. for e-citation, integrated parking software. An agreement with the Royal Bank of Canada for the extension of banking services. A site plan agreement with Necht and Birchhold Inc. for two, sorry, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five East Bayshore Road. And a facility use agreement with the Concert Factory Inc. And then finally, a bylaw to adopt a policy respecting taxes for the city of Owen Sound.
Thank you.
Moved by myself, second by Counselor Kepke, that bylaw numbers two thousand sixteen, zero five zero, zero five one, zero five two, zero five three, zero five four, zero five five, zero five six, zero five seven, zero five eight, zero five nine and zero six zero be passed and enacted.
You have all in favor? Oops, sorry?
Sorry, your worship. I think I just heard a, a few errors in that resolution. I believe there's bylaws number sixty-one to sixty-nine.
There's the numbers across. I kind of wondered, I assumed I was wrong.
Okay, I'll go through the whole three. Let me go through the whole thing again.
We're going to start over.
Okay, moved by myself, second by Counselor Kepke. The bylaw numbers two thousand sixteen, zero six one, zero six two, zero six three, zero six four, zero six five, zero six six, zero six seven, zero six eight, zero six nine be passed and enacted.
All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So, that concludes our business for tonight. It is five to nine or four minutes to nine. We're done. Happy Victoria weekend, everybody. Please be safe. Leave your car parked if you're, if you're enjoying Molson Canadian on a long weekend, on a two-four weekend. We're adjourned.